Hold on, hold on, we got six twenty-nine.
Yeah, I gotta turn off my silent vibrator.
Yeah, everyone vibrate.
Oh, do you want me to say this? Call to order, pleasure of allegiance?
Sure.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jen, can you take your roll in, please?
Okay. Mr. Eastick?
Present.
Mr. Rowley?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mr. Jennings?
I need a motion to elect the officers for the balance of two thousand thirteen.
I would like to nominate Kirk Jennings for president.
Second.
And I would like to move that motion to be closed. Nominate.
Second.
I'll second the vote.
Take a line detector.
Take a roll on there?
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Eastick?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
I have to stand. Can I get a motion for the office of vice president? I will nominate John Ryder.
I'll second.
This one began the first office.
You need discussion on the roll, let's have a roll on there?
We have a motion to close that?
Yes.
Mr. Eastick?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Why don't we need a motion to close that? We need a motion to close the first.
Relax.
I'm just asking.
I don't know, do I read this thing?
That's you, that's president.
I'd like to approve the appointment of Richard Hendricks to serve as the board member through December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. This is the fill of vacancy created by the resignation of our board member Doug Jones. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? I would say-
I'm gonna guess it's one of the four people.
That's him!
Stand up, Richard. I will say that having been involved with the nine candidates that expressed tremendous interest, all of them were quite dedicated and enthused to have a chance. We then narrowed down, after ten minutes of speaking with each, which wasn't enough, I know, but we had to limit it, we narrowed down to a smaller pool of what we thought were the four most likely candidates. And then the three of us, John was ill at the time, unfortunately, we spent a half hour more with each of the three, or each of the four candidates, and we really looked at all qualities, attributes, everything that they would bring to the board for the next two years. Quite honestly, you could throw a dart at any of the four names and we would've done well for the district. And quite honestly, any of the other nine, or five that weren't invited back would not have done bad for the district. So, at the end of that process, it just came down to having to make a decision. And the selection of Mr. Hendricks by no means is a negative mark on the other three. There's no need to give you the names of the other three. They came close, they know who they are, and but based on this, I would like to welcome Mr. Hendricks to help serve us for the next two years, four months.
Thank you.
Now, we have to actually vote on it, so you can't stop.
Okay. I do wanna add that I think one of the hardest decisions the board had to make, especially when you get to the final four, I don't wanna do like a basketball thing, but I mean, it was really, the final four was extremely difficult.
Well, you know what, the hard part of calling everybody, and I don't know why you guys didn't step up and volunteer.
Cause you're the president.
Um, vice president, sorry. You never wanna deliver-
Cause they're waiting.
And it's not bad news if it's, of course, it's not life and death, death news, but you don't wanna deliver that news, and everyone I talked to was very conciliatory and appreciative of our process. They didn't even think they'd get a chance to talk.
Oh.
And the second level of process, they'd love the opportunity to talk more. So, I think that might be good precedence if we were to do this process.
And to add one last thing, I think not only the four, but the eleven that were present, all eleven of them, and I think you sort of touched on them, it shows, the whole group shows the passion that's still in the district. You know, all of them were dynamic, the last four were exceptional, but I mean, all of them were dynamic and all of them probably could've done a good job, but to have that much passion, the district shows that the district is alive, and most importantly, we're growing, we're not shrinking. Where, you know, and for a while, we were curious, but the tree's grown again and full steam ahead.
Just to-
Eleven definitely is in pole.
That's right.
Careful those kids from bowl.
One, two, three, four, five, six, nine, ten, eleven.
That's it.
And just one last comment, just to point out, just to give you a little insight of what happened in our interview sessions, that we definitely gave them a chance to talk about why they're enthused about being on the board, but we actually asked them to criticize what they knew of the current board, the last five or six years of activities. And it sounded like pretty much across the board, us up for getting something. Across the board, everyone said they just wanted to be part of the momentum that they've seen really starting to take hold. That's not because of the board, I think in large part, Mino and the board have collectively worked in general, or focused on the numerics of our budgets. The combination of everything we've done, I think everyone wanted to be part of it, so that was encouraged. So, with that, I close the discussion.
Okay.
Roll, please.
Okay. Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Eastick?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes. So with that, Richard, we need to swear you in.
Guys?
And then you will sit upon the infamous board table.
Actually, you guys have to, yeah, that's the bit you have, it's word and two.
Because I'm a new person.
Because you're president and vice president.
Wait, all three of us have?
I'm doing it on all three at one time.
All three?
All you have to do is listen to the talk.
It's not I do this time, cause I will.
You save a little bit of money here.
I mean, I work, but you had to, just wanna be honest with you.
I'm sure my husband wouldn't mind it all.
I did have an age difference, I don't know, that's why I-
Do you, Richard Hendricks, John Ryder and Richard Hendricks, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as president, vice president, and board member, and implore the Laetona exempted for the school district, Columbia County, to the best of your ability and accordance with the laws now in effect and thereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is chosen and qualified.
Welcome to the board.
I suppose you want that for that for you.
Vice President?
Yes, we did take the title, that was good.
President?
Oh, what?
Superintendent?
House guy, did you go up there? Does my house, is my house, is it worth going down?
We really just went down the line.
I'm president.
I killed ELP on my license plate. Alright. So I think we pass it on to Jen now.
No, you gotta approve the minutes.
President!
I'm sorry, it's been so long. I take a motion to approve the minutes of last regular meeting on July twenty-fifth and the August first special meeting. What are your motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Pretty straightforward, thank you. Jen, call roll, please.
Mr. Eastick?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
I want you to roll first.
Mr. Hendricks?
I'm standing.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes. We talked about it. Alright, now let's move to number seven, the treasures report. Jen, you've got a whole bill of items to weigh.
Okay, attached in the treasures report is Bill's council cables, as well as board reports. The donations that we received last month were a hundred and forty-five dollars from the Italian American Club for the football supplemental fund, and the following were from the Legion, two hundred and fifty for football t-shirts, two hundred for eighth grade cheerleader warmups, two hundred for golf t-shirts. And the donations from the VFW in Washingtonville were two fifty for the football supplemental fund and a hundred dollars for the golf team supplemental fund. And we are going to approve shape league once again as our workers' comp and TBA for unemployment for four hundred and ninety dollars, which is actually savings from last year.
Is it same thing?
Same thing, just cheaper price, they lowered their price.
Good deal. You have a motion for seven, eight, and D?
Motion.
Hey Jen, real quick question, and I know you've been, what, three years now, but are these numbers the same? Do we start to collect the same amount of donations, are we getting more?
We seem to be getting more.
I thought so.
Yeah, we got twelve, almost twelve hundred dollars on the table right here between those two, so hats off to both.
Is it unsolicited, or do we have an effort to campaign for needs?
Well, usually with the clubs, we have to actually request donations from them, because that's the way that they do it. So, if, as long as, and they like to give to us, they have told Mr. Matludoff.
Some of the quarters are constitution, they have to.
They have to.
Well, and also, it helps us keep our budget from rising every year, correct? I mean, doesn't this sort of help?
A lot of them are for extracurricular activities, so that it does help sports or like student council and things like that, so.
And the other that I asked, short of the grant process, is there something between where there's larger entities or groups that might also be an opportunity to solicit some additional? We might try to stand out if we under-
Most of that solicitation's done through your book. They solicit a lot of the bigger companies and groups. Now, remember too, with the sports ads, there's a wide variety of companies that place ads in the football programs.
That's fair.
That's where most of them, the football one is the one that takes in the most.
Alright, thank you. Did we do, we did just find one. Okay, public participation.
We have to vote now.
Discuss the whole.
Two more on the other side. Oh, is there two more?
Yeah, that's what I saw, the cheerleading.
Oh, yeah, the middle school cheerleader and the junior class activity budget too, we need to approve.
Sorry, we already made the motion.
Sorry.
We'll let it sit. No more discussion, can we call the roll?
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Eastick?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Was there any possibility for participation?
No.
All three, have you all three waived your interest publicly participating? Okay, now let's move on to old business.
The student achievement reports, I'll do the new business. I'll start with A, one through seven, for the, for the motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion, the employmentary may, was approved at the last meeting for the remainder of this year, and then their contracts are up, so we're going on. And once again, that's another addition, that was Cheryl Forn's position.
Question, as far as the cook position, are these all, these are all renewals?
Yes, what happened was, we hired Bruce Searle, was it?
Secretary.
With the secretary, two or six and a half.
Her position was taken over by Joey Morris.
That's number three, and then Joey Lance's position by Karen, they're eating number four, and then the employment of Cheryl Morrow as the oncoming position.
Okay, so are all cook, are all cook positions filled then?
No, they're all-
Okay, we're done then, okay.
And I will say that they're quite a new process, I know that Russ and Babet, Babet works for nutrition, Russ is a supervisor seeing the interviews. They interviewed, we-
We probably had twenty-five candidates.
Twenty-five, approximately half.
Yeah, about fifty, yeah.
About fifty, oh wow.
Wow.
For three hours, for the cook position.
So, three, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
They did a lot of interviewing and-
A lot of new stars, a lot of single moms. A lot of single moms.
So, that's all the discussion, I have any questions?
No. So that's A through C?
That's A, one through seven.
Call.
Yeah, we flipped the B and C.
That's what you do as members here.
We need a motion. Let's go, let's go. Motion was called.
Yeah, Mike and Jen.
I definitely asked you second.
Well, I was trying to just keep track of the A, B, or C. Uh, can we call roll?
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder? Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Eastick?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Do you wanna do B and C together?
Yeah, yeah, and Mr. Hendricks, if I have some discussion on either by itself, it's something I need to do, except by the time. The, okay, B and C and, yes, B and C together. I forgot I have a-
Motion. Second. Anybody with discussion or questions? Josh reported, we need to-
Yeah, Karen, Karen, we have the contracts.
Okay. Roll call please, Jen.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Eastick?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes. Motion on D?
You did a big division on D. I actually do all the way D through.
Okay, we can look for a, motion on D through F, and then RB can kind of walk through it after motion.
Motion.
Every year I get confused on how this works.
I'll give it a second.
It just, this confuses me, transportation contracts, you're talking Herman Christian, Colonel Mee, St. Paul's, how does that work again, the state pays us and then we pay them, or how, is that?
We actually pay them in advance, and then we file a T-two in the summer and we get the money back when we file the T-two.
Is it a complete even whitewash, or do we, do we?
Yeah, it's, it's their cost to us, it's in and out.
Okay.
But we're not, we're sending out the amount of work of how it costs for us to bus that student in here.
Yes.
Not the cost to taking the student all the way to the Cardinal Room.
Correct.
But whatever money we would get for busing them, we're just gonna give the Cardinal money instead of us taking them?
Per student, right, per student.
Yeah, per student.
I just wanna know how it's calculated, the destination calculation, or the?
There's a set amount by the state.
Okay.
And the minimum amount is usually what we give the parent to transport the student, because if not, we would have to transport ourselves, and it's much easier just to give the parent the money to transport.
It's a flat rate.
It's a, yeah, a flat rate.
The open enrollment, the lunch prices, which I believe we talked about at several board meetings ago, and once again, Mr. Duke is gonna, eighth graders love it, he does a great job, her and Mrs. Barrett from Washington DC.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I didn't see the list of people that didn't announce.
We, yeah, you just put it in here? And I know we got two more, there was one or two, I signed something late this afternoon. So we had a couple more.
It's still changing.
It's still changing. It's eleven D, okay, I'm at eleven D.
Has the CSO gone in our favor yet?
No.
No. Last year was the closest, it was one, like one twelve to ninety-eight.
Yeah.
As close as we've been, because when we first started looking, when I first started at least, I know Kurt was big on this, and we were talking about, we were forty, forty-five, almost fifty down. We haven't seen that, we're not quite there, we're twenty-eight.
Well, Brittany, you mentioned it has helped a lot.
Yes.
That's good, cause then it depends on if it's in the right direction. You know, if, a couple years ago, you're fifty down and you can keep it in the teens or the single digits, even better, then we're moving in the right way.
I can't get to eleven D three because eleven D two is so long.
And that could change, right?
Oh, it's, it already changed, it's changed today. It changes every day.
All depends on the phone, huh?
My question, do we need to, it's too late now for this, but do we need to start building a marketing campaign, selling?
I think we did a couple of years, and I think it works well, we did commercials, and we talked about making phone calls, and I think we should follow up with that, but yeah, I definitely do think that we should continue, get back to that. We kinda started it, get back to it.
I hate to go on RB's thing, but you know, the district has changed, unfortunately, we're one of the fortunate districts that don't have to deal with the red around us every day, that we're in the black and not the red. But once again, RB mentioned, and Babet, who's a local Laetona, he could come in here and he works for TV twenty-seven. This year, Jackson Milton went into TV twenty-seven, they said, "We want a TV campaign like Laetona did with you." So I don't know if you saw, I think it was right around Easter, Jackson Milton hit for two months with a TV campaign that was a direct correlation of our campaign from, what, that's two years ago, I mean, three years ago. So, I mean, that's sort of cool, being ahead of the curve. I'm not revisiting it, we can redo-
I was thinking, instead of there's this pair of gangly brothers trying to advertise vegetables, you could probably get some real stellar students out there trying to sell the same vegetables and wearing Laetona shirts.
You could do that, that would be good.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, that's you.
Stucker's gone though, he would've been tall enough.
Very good. Alright, no, I'm just, I'm just curious about trying to set up a plan to really pull more in with some marketing skills, so.
Right, and I know that Kurt was a good, was a real proponent and leader in that of self-eaters back, maybe something that we need to sit down and really consciously be conscious about.
Um, just, you need a party. Okay, are we good then? We need to vote.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Eastick?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
President, take Jen.
Okay, superintendent's report, real quick. Didn't have anything at first, I told Kevin, it was a short meeting, so I tried to find something quickly. Just wanted to say, I got to go to the VFW last night in Washingtonville for the Meet the Bears, and I know Cheryl was there, Mr. Eastick was there.
A ton of people.
And it was, that's what I'm gonna say, it was unbelievable. I mean, Mike touched on it, and I wanna just reiterate what he said, that the passion and enthusiasm is just overwhelming. You went there, we were parking like it was the, we were parked way down. Yeah, and it was just an amazing time, and people didn't wanna leave. I'll tell you what, we sat down, people didn't wanna leave, and you summed up with, I wish I would've, I hope Kevin wrote it down, like you read it, what you said was exactly right, it was just great. And the VFW paid for all of that, I think it was like four hundred and fifty hot dogs with chips. So, the drink, I know they served water.
And their workers did it too, we even had to clean up.
We didn't do anything clean up, they put up the PA, I was there, we were there so long, they're taking it down, we're still there talking to them, and I just can't say thank you enough.
Will we send them a letter, thank?
Uh, Jennifer's, or Cheryl's working on that, that's awesome.
Yeah, John asked us to, on Macalduke, so we will.
No, this was Meet the Bears. And we're working on that, I don't try to get a mic for the bonfire too, yes. Cause that sometimes can overhear if you're right next to the speakers. But thanks to the VFW, the Washingtonville VFW. We're starting off the school year with two excellent teacher and service days, and we're excited about Monday for the first, when students arrive for their first day of school. It's Monday. We're just sleeping in.
Yeah, I know.
We have to talk, we're at the perp in you again. And we're gonna reconvene the safety committee hopefully in September when things die down. But we placed room numbers, we talked about that already in the herd, working out the extra windows, enlarging numbers of the doors. But we also are in the process of upgrading our cameras, as well as adding some keyless entry doors to the interior, so that we can lock down the elementary, because sometimes when the high school leaves and they float down this way, or someone's float down this way, if we put a fob on that door, at that time we can lock it, and parents will have to check in, make sure they check in, just some more security measures. But as we talk about that, we kinda put on the back burner about the front door attendance last year. It was, we talked about two halftime positions, and I think it was costing the district about fifteen thousand dollars for what we had set up. And it's just something we kinda put on the back burner because of safety grants, the fact of the, they talked about levies for security, what direction you wanna go. We had a great presentation with Dan Valentine and John Soldano here for one of the in-service, they talked about Alice training, informed our staff what it was, and to see if, you know, we wanna tweak our lockdown procedure. But, you know, it's something that Nick will need to discuss, I know that this, you know, may not be the time and place, how we wanna do this, but the other thing I have for discussion is in the parking lot in front of the school, in the parking in front of the school, we talked briefly at other board meetings about signs, it's hard to get safety vehicles up that lane when you're parked all the way down the lane.
I could play it like that from day one.
So, we did have a sign made up, and I was gonna bring it to show it to you, and they would say, "No parking violation will be fined and towed," and they would be all the way down the lane, and that would give us the opportunity to do that, to tow. That's all I have.
What's all leaving?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I wanna know-
Start with Michael, since he's on a beat here.
Two full question. The fifteen thousand dollars, I know before with some emails or phone calls, we talked about perhaps where we could be creative and try to come up with that money. And probably the second bigger question is, has there been any news from the state in the last thirty, sixty days of funding for twenty fourteen?
Well, they have, they passed a safety though, but it's one-time money. So, you could-
We like one-time money.
Yeah, one-time money.
You could put that in, well, in its first come, first served.
So we should do it now? Well, it's September, it's coming up.
How much, are we talking for one-time Laetona?
It's, there's no limit, I don't think.
Right, well, to be spent on what?
It has to be on safety upgrades to the school.
Three new school buses, that's safety.
No, so let me ask you, one-time money, but can you structure a one-time plan that'll hire a person and upfront they get three years' worth of pay, and they're in that position, or?
See, I haven't looked at the actual details of the bill when it comes to salaries. So, that's something we're gonna have to check in.
Maybe release the money and how to apply, I didn't set time.
Cause I wanna work in the rules as best we can to maximize.
Well, the nice thing is the senator from Kansas is the one that has the bill, so, and I spoke with him once about it. Shimon, yeah, so we can talk to him about it, too.
Cause we talked about that in front gate for a year and a half now, so.
Well, we're recognized for it.
Where are we at? It's been, yeah, we've been, where are we at with the collective, five of us on hosting a person there full-time during school year?
Well, if we could be paid for the safety thing, I'm on it right now, you know, I mean, that's the only question, is where we getting the money? You know, if we could be from there, that's great.
Like I said, that was in September, the guidelines and the sheet.
For the next meeting then?
I should.
So, you can vote next meeting, if it's, if it's something, okay. Is there other things that we could buy with that money, should we be getting ready for it? We have a month, I mean, you know, how about extended cameras? I mean, like they said, get on the front, I mean.
Lot of possibilities.
Lot of possibilities. Could you, I mean, I, this sounds crazy, but, I mean, could you possibly do something to get like a gator for the school, so you would have like not only Russ, or if there was someone in public safety or someone in the front door that could go around the building, I mean, you know, how, do you have a gator, could we have another gator, I mean? I mean, one-time, it's one-time money.
I never stopped the rulings, what do you mean a gator?
Yeah, the little carts.
Oh, you mean a John Doe gate?
It's, yeah, it's John Doe.
Not like one of the portal ones.
I'm thinking of gates, no gates, but are there any other things where you can like lock down half the school, automatic lockdowns of the facility?
Like the locks, locks to go into, like-
Or build a safe room, or if there's money that's built, I wanna know what options we have. Take them all downstairs to the basement, lock down that basement.
Well, I mean, there is, it's funny, there was a thing on the news, and I think they're out of Akron or Camden, they specialize in bulletproofing schools, it was just on the news, and that's what, everything, they can bulletproof everything. Windows, you know, mirrors, you know, whatever you want bulletproof, they could doors, basin block, I mean, you know, they have steel sheets that you could put in. I don't, and curiosity is, when you get extensive of that, does that affect the fire guidelines?
You gotta remember too, that you have to remember that with the, and we haven't made a decision yet, with the Alice train, part of that is to get out of them. Not to stay in the old- Not to stay and be a sitting duck, you know, break the window to do things, okay, so, you know.
We need a nice workshop, to really talk very-
Yeah, and you know, and like I said, Chief and Dana did a great job, and President, you should ask the staff, I can bring them in for a workshop.
Was he getting excited about something like this?
You know, that everybody I talked to said it was the best two insurance days that we've had in a long time. They have a couple sets since they've been here.
Really?
Dan did a good job. Excited is, there's some apprehension, and I can see why, cause you're the first line of defense, you know, and you put your students there.
A little nervousness.
Yeah, a little nervous, but all we did was introduce, say, hey, you know, we work as a team, we're gonna introduce what's out there. This is the, this is the new-
The old way was to hunker down, and then Allison Way is to exit the building, so there's-
Well, like, like if we're in the building here, and, and there's a shooter, instead of saying coat blue, and saying, tell everybody what's going on, there's a shooter, and we're in room two-eleven, can you lock this, and get all these, these students out of here, rather than come down the hall.
And that's sort of one of the things we talked about when we were originally, uh, doing, you know, upping the security after the problem over the holidays, is the door lock. Because if you, like, the way your doors are throughout the whole building, if you had a door lock on the bottom of the door either way, you could prevent the door from opening, and it would be very cost efficient. It would be a simple, cost efficient thing, to either lock, you know, if, if say if the shooter was in the room, if you want to lock him in that room, like you said, so everyone else could get out, well, there's no way your arm's gonna go down there and move that lock, you know, or vice versa, if he's outside, at least this way you can go, you know, buy yourself minutes, everyone gets out of the building. And that would be something-
We're steering towards intervention.
Well, I mean, if, if there's, I mean, you could figure out maybe two hundred, three hundred doors, times how many ever locks, petition for that too. You know, and at least Russ could have an, an install them at his convenience, you know, a couple here, a couple there.
That's why it's intriguing, when she says, there's no limit.
Yeah, right, I mean-
Let's list down some dreams, and then get what we can get.
But if, if it's first come, first served, and we only have a month for us to all to throw some emails around with each other, and throw some ideas out, because I would imagine, unless the school board's sleeping, they're gonna, you know, this will be gone by Halloween.
Oh, yeah, by that time.
By the interstates, or the village. Alright.
Okay, I don't have anything, you want to go around the table?
And the, uh, let's go, well, that was the start of open discussion with Michael. Mr. Eastick?
I had the opportunity to, and this is just kind of overseeing kids, I had the opportunity to watch my daughter, um, perform in S F tryouts, nine, three or four tryouts. And it was, I had no contact with her, I could observe, but I had no contact with her. It's a very eye-opening experience, if you do it with an open mind. And whatever your child does, or a child does, whether it be music, recitals, or something like that, I think it's always good to put them under a little bit of that pressure to perform. Because I saw some things that were very good, I saw some things that were, were not very bad, but, you know, negative. I guess my point is, a lot of us don't put ourselves, or maybe even our siblings, or our children in those positions because fear of failure. But failure to prepare is preparing to fail in life later on. And it was just, I guess the advice is, put your kids out there and make them, and let them perform, because they will. And you know where you, and you know where you're staying. What's that?
You can learn from failure.
You can learn, right, from small little mistakes, but you put them out there, and then they, then you know what you need to work on, whether it's in math, or, or reading, or, or any subject in school, or just, it was a real eye-opening experience for me.
Yeah, but just keep in mind, you and Stephanie are engaged, so there's a sales face to putting, sales face, sales?
Sales face.
Thank you. Putting your kid out there, you guys are their support when you fall.
Right.
We need to make sure that all the parents in the community not only do that, but they're there to support failures do occur.
It's a pretty humbling experience, and it's a neat experience, I mean, you can't, you don't, you can't consider yourself the best unless you play the best.
Sure.
And, uh, learn to love.
That's your-
That's my mom.
The deepest philosophical comments I've heard you say since about four thirty. Tom?
Um, I'd just like to remind, this Saturday, seven o'clock, we are reigniting Letonia versus Columbia football alumni game.
You playing?
Oh, boy.
I'm not alumni, I'm not.
It's Saturday.
It's Saturday.
Playing wild season.
How long has that been gone?
It's been gone ten, twelve years.
Flyer tackle.
Yeah.
Tackle.
Pads, you have pads.
Thank God it's from New Jersey.
They put bats on?
We have the oldest one playing-
They put bats on, that's awesome.
In Danny Guido.